A distinguished senator Mao, members of the House of Reps, members of the State Assembly, honourable commissioners, my lord the bishop, your highnesses our royal fathers, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, and the young people at the back, especially the youth corporates, it's nice to see you. I, I will try not to get carried away because each time I talk about agriculture, I tend to go a little too far. But I'll do my best to make it brief. We were quite encouraged when we sat with His Excellency just before coming in here, and he made a few statements to us. And I said to myself, my goodness, we have genetic similarities. The governor, the young man, and myself, the not so young. Because he raised issues which we are all very concerned about. One of the tragedies of Nigeria today is that people have forgotten history. We don't even teach it in school anymore, it's no longer on the curriculum. In our attempt to get to the moon in Kenos, we have forgotten where we're coming from. And I am a disciple of a famous old Roman politician and philosopher called Cicero. He said, "A society that knows nothing about the past is a society that is forever made of children." If not, there was a man from here called Michael Okpara. Some of what he did in agriculture has not been matched by anyone else in this country's history. I go through the east and I see plantations at Oge, cashew nuts. And here in Okigwe, I go to the south-south, especially Cross River and Aquaibom. And I find that Okpara left behind seventeen thousand hectares of palm trees. And I then discover to my pain that all those plantations have been abandoned. Abandoned. Meanwhile, we have shiploads of palm oil coming in from Malaysia. They took the nut from here, as the Minister of Labour said earlier. We've all become a nation of traders, importers, and foreign exchange hunters. And while it lasted, it looked fantastic. So much easier to bring a shipload of rice from Malaysia, from Thailand, and walk away with a profit of fifty million naira and make a fantastic impression with your bank manager. Buy a jeep, get ready for elections. While we were earning money from oil, it was fantastic. Then the music stopped, suddenly. And now we're in trouble, we're angry, we're blaming, unfortunately, blaming one man. Of course, it is his duty to sort it out. But it is not his fault. However, it's very rewarding to see my young brother here talking seriously about getting back to where we were and bringing Nigeria to where she should be. Palm oil about six months ago was seven thousand naira per twenty-five liter jerrycan. It is now eighteen thousand, at least. Am I right or wrong? The price has gone up. Cashew nuts now sells for half a million naira per tonne of raw nuts. If you roast four tonnes of raw nuts, you get one tonne of roasted cashew. You get ten thousand US dollars. And that's not all. When you roast, you extract a liquid from the cashew shell called cashew nut shell liquid. It is very expensive in the world market. But that's not even all. We are now making cashew juice from the fruit. It has more minerals, especially vitamin C, than any other fruit. Even higher contents of vitamin C than orange and bananas. So you waste nothing. But the palm tree, the cashew nut plantations are all dead and abandoned. I am a cashew farmer. I have fourteen thousand trees and I'm planting twenty-five thousand trees this year. Why should Abia not continue to make money from cashews and palms? And even more, cocoa. You were rivals of Ondo State and Cross River in cocoa. Not too long ago, I received a letter from a traditional ruler here lamenting the fact that even after harvesting cocoa, the access roads were so bad, they couldn't evacuate. So Nigeria declined from number two in cocoa to number seven. Whose fault, our fault, we discovered oil and gas. And I'm glad to hear the governor saying we're going back to cocoa. And the good news I have for you is, we are going to relaunch cocoa in three places: Abia, Ondo, and Cross River. And our target is twenty million trees per annum. Twenty million trees per annum of a new variety of cocoa that flowers in two years. And we are developing a new fertilizer for cocoa. The NPK twenty-ten-ten plus two percent boron. It's a big stimulant for cocoa production. You should get to the top. Don't be content with being number two, or three, or four, or even seven. There's no reason for it. Now, rice. A few days ago, CNN announced that Nigeria was now the second largest producer of rice in the world. And as for Africa, we've overtaken Egypt. But there were many Nigerians who were visibly angry. There are those eternal cynics who don't want to hear any good news about their country. Even if you win the World Cup in football, they still want to doubt. Because we've decided that nothing good comes out of Nazareth, but Christ Jesus did. They said, "No, it's a lie." Well, we didn't plan the story. You can't go to CNN and say that for me. I'm sure you know that. But they have means of finding out. And as for rice, nothing has cost this country more than the importation of rice. For nearly forty years, we were spending five million dollars a day importing rice. Five million dollars every day of the week. Shipping rice in from Vietnam, Thailand mainly, and sometimes from India. And we're quite content, shiploads. But here is Abia, a state with great potential for rice production. We gave up. Now we have no money to import the rice, and we need the rice, and we're very angry. Of course, a hungry person is an angry person. Shall we continue to be angry, or shall we continue to reexamine ourselves and begin to grow rice? We will begin to grow rice. And the good news, Your Excellency, is I have brought in one hundred rice meals into the country. Some of them are coming here. Because not being an economist, but a practical individual, I've said to myself, if we wait for the private sector to open letters of credit and borrow money from the bank at twenty-eight or twenty-nine percent, and open LCs and go and bring the rice meals and install, we may have to wait for the river Niger to finish flowing by before we cross. Because people have no money. So government will bring in the machines and sell them to the private sector at very low rates because we have to eat well. The same thing is going to happen with palm oil mills. In the next two years, by the grace of God, we should spread anything in the neighbourhood of two hundred small oil mills nationwide. Mainly in the palm-producing areas of this country, the southeast, south-south, part of the southwest, and even part of the north-central zone closer to the southeast. These are small mills which we'll install in communities. We've decided we'll build them here because we have found in our research in food production that there's a lot of metal poisoning in our food. We're using raw metals, even to grind tomatoes in the market, and onions, and pepper. We done research in Furo and found that three very dangerous metals are getting into these food items which we consume, threatening our livers and kidneys, which is why you see so many people now in hospital, my liver, my kidney, asking for ten million to go to India, food processing. So we spoke to Broda in Enugu. And we have asked the federal government to remove the duty on stainless steel. Because stainless steel is the best thing to use in processing food. So that the oil we produce will be pure and unfettered by impurities. And these machines will be built so they can be maintained, and they'll be sold to cooperatives at very low rates. And a lot of them will be coming here with the plantations you're raising. Now, the cashews we're going to produce here will also have to be processed. Vietnam is the number-one processor of cashew nuts now. And we're looking at about six major cashew processing factories in the country. So since Abia is a processor, stand by for one. My only request is that we need to have private sector groups running these things so they can manage them, repay their little loan, and earn foreign exchange for this country. The potential you have in Abia here is so huge that if we actually explore them fully, the day is not far when the federation account will be a bonus. And it should be. I think the time is coming when every state should establish its own autonomy, financial autonomy, autonomy, that's what I mean. You can. You should be able to earn your own forex as a state. If you buy the products, export them, pay the local people, and bring in, and enlarge your foreign exchange in your account. There's no reason why not. Because the federation account is going to get thinner and smaller. And people say there are too many states. I don't believe that. Every state has capacity to survive. The point is that we have not invested well in the possibilities which exist. So if we decide to return to agriculture, I'll give you an example of how much money you can make. I see youth corporates behind. If you graduate, you look for a job. The jobs are not there. But if you take one hectare of land to grow rice, we give you the right kind of fertilizer blended especially for Abia because the fertilizer you use here will not do in canoe or in oil stick because there is a bit of acidity in your soil. So we have to do what they call liming to take care of the acid in the soil. You can, if you have good seeds and good agronomic practices, make at least five tonnes of rice per hectare. If you do five tonnes of rice at the current price of three, of one hundred and thirty thousand naira per tonne, you're looking at about eight hundred thousand, at least. Eight hundred thousand is more than the salary of a great level-eight officer in one year. And you've earned all that in a maximum of four months. And if there are rice mills, they are waiting to collect your rice and go and mill and sell. I am talking from experience. I was the first Nigerian to mill rice free of stones in nineteen eighty-six. And I brought a small mill from South Korea. So sometimes you hear that, "Actually, I don't have a PhD in agric, so I'm unfit to be a Minister of Agriculture." There are due apologies. The only thing is, I have a PhD in the practice of agriculture, which has lasted over forty years. In another week, I'll be producing oil from lemon grass and oil from eucalyptus leaf. I run a ground nut oil mill. I have the only caster oil factory in Africa to start producing in about two months. So when I talk agric and ask you to come and get involved, I'm not talking because I'm luring you into something theoretical. The potentials are just too big. The demand for Nigerian produce abroad is massive. The Vietnamese and the Chinese and the Japanese are even looking for cactus. Cactus, which they use in fencing farms, in pass of enough. They peel the horns, the threads, and they boil it and eat. There is potential here for coconuts. Coconut oil is very expensive now. One litre of coconut oil is seven thousand naira. A litre is a beer bottle. Coconut can grow fantastically here. I will round up very quickly by asking for two things. We are planning to build a program called Project Ten Thirty-Seven. Ten dams and lakes in every state of the federation. Ten dams in each state. We are using the N-Pa program to train young people from the localities to engage in extension services so they can teach the farmer what to do. For the dams, we shall be in touch with your Minister of Agriculture to show us likely sites. Because there has been a drought in Central Africa for seven years. There is now drought in East Africa. We must not wait for the drought to come here before we start panicking. So there should be water, three dams in each, a minimum of each, of three dams in each senatorial district. So should there be problems with water, we can irrigate and grow food at least twice or thrice a year. we have no business with poverty, absolutely no business with hunger. What has happened to us has been self-induced. I hope and pray that by the time we get through this, that the people of our societies and our states and local governments will not sit and watch any government in future abandon agriculture. And don't sit there, fold your arms, and say, "It's the government." Demonstrate. Don't sit if you hear that suddenly we're importing rice again to please a few importers. Let the rice growers take on the streets and block the streets like they do in France. Two percent of the French throwing tomatoes around on the roads will close down France if a government policy does not suit them. We are too laid back, too indifferent. We prefer to complain rather than act. The danger facing us is that these young boys at the back, like the ones who began Boko Haram, don't have the patience that you and I had in our early days. Sixteen years ago, I warned about Boko Haram. I was called an academic who was speaking grammar. It came and cost this country a whole lot. The youth are running out of patience. The women are getting extremely tired. And we, the political class, must direct policy to production, industrial growth, like the Honourable Minister said. Because what we called growth before was a mirage. We collected oil revenues, divided the income per capita, and we claimed we were growing. The only thing that was growing was poverty. Poverty. So let me round up by requesting that you remember this. If we want our ambitions to grow, we want food production to rise, we want to be in the world market in food exports. If we want our dreams to come true, let us not sleep. You want your dreams to come true, don't sleep. Abia Pwenu! Abia Mammanu! God bless you all.
The town hall meeting reaching you from the International Conference Centre here in Omahea, the Abia State capital. We've been listening to speakers, different speakers. First, it was the Minister for Information and Culture, Lai Mohamed, who welcomed everybody on the second edition of the town hall meeting for the second time in the southeast. He described it as unique and also launched, took time to launch the "Change Begin With You" campaign. Temple, you were here when that happened.
Yes, exactly. The "Change Begin With Me" campaign was, of course, launched, and it talked about reorientation of our core value, adopting a paradigm shift from the way we used to do things. That is, no more bribery and corruption, no kickback, and things like that. That's what runs everything.
Also, we had selected ministers, that of the Trade and Commerce, Okichuku Emenaru. We had that of Minister of State on Solid Mineral, Alaji Abubakar, and Minister of Labour and Employment, Senator Chris N'Gige. And of course, that of Agriculture, Aldo Wee. They all spoke on the need to go back to the bases and including to have our industries working, especially in Aba, for us to promote our homemade goods. And that of going back to agriculture to produce foods and food to help us increase our food productivity. The Minister of Agriculture reinforced the need for Abia State to go back to produce cashew and cocoa. And of course, for that of Trade and Commerce, it was all pointed at patronizing made-in-Nigerian goods. And here in Aba, Temple, I know that a lot of goods would be produced on what the minister said.
Exactly. The Abia State Governor, Dr. Okaze Baso, has kick-started that one several years ago, and I zoom more on that.
All right, so you're still watching the live program. Please do continue to stay with us.
A lot of questions from the social media based on the promotion by the Ministry of Information, Abia State, informing people about this program. As a result of that, we would quickly take just a little or few after the questions that have been sent in from the social media for the Honourable Ministers. Jar after, I would open the floor. And the first question goes to the Honourable Minister of Trade and Investment. Sir, this question is coming from one Mr. Udo. Udo said that he just read about the importation of fake tyres into this country, and that some Chinese nationals have been arrested by Standard Organization of Nigeria, a parastatal under you. What is going to happen to these tyres? Are they going to find their ways into the market? And you know they can cause accidents. From the same Udo, he said that you had asked that the people of Abia State should tell you what are the problems they encounter in terms of production. He is saying that you already know what the problem is, and that the problem is production cost, which is from energy. What is the government doing in this sector? Although you are not the Minister of Power. And to the Minister of Labour, one Mr. Anyanwu is asking about the N-Pa program. He said that a lot of people in different states, this program has not taken off. What is the problem? And that he read today, Mr. Anyanwu said he read today that the federal government is planning to recruit three hundred and fifty graduates. Under what program is this one? Please explain. And to the Minister of Information and Culture, they said you've been talking too much about corruption, corruption, anti-corruption. But they heard the Minister of Justice and Attorney General has spoken about retrieving of some monies. Where is the money? What is it being used for? And why are you keeping it? This one is coming from one IK. Well, for the Minister of Mines and Steel Development, one Mr. Obi is asking you what is happening to the Enugu Coal Mine. And that here in Abia, somewhere in Arochuku and Ohafya, they have very big deposits of limestone and cement. Is the federal government looking into this so that this is exploited? For Minister of Agriculture, this question is coming from Mr. Ben. And Ben is saying, he is a farmer, that how soon are we expecting fertilizers for distribution to farmers as the farming season is drawing very near? And then we have somebody who said he's watching this program from Canada. His name is Malanwali. Malanwali said he is a rice miller. Why is it that your uncle program, you are making money directly to farmers instead of giving it to rice millers? That it is a problem. They need this money in order to, you know, be able to procure the rice paddy. That you should please prepare answers to them. So distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, these are the questions from the social media. And with the permission of the Honourable Minister, we may request the Honourable Ministers to respond or react to the questions before we go up to the floor. Thank you. Honourable Minister of Information, sir.
Thank you very much. I think the affected Honourable Ministers can take the questions, you know, from the social media, starting with the Honourable Minister of Industry, Trade and Investment. And that is a question about, um...
Thank you.
From Mr. Udo.
Thank you. I have, I was asked two questions. The first question is on importation of fake and substandard tyres. What will become of them? Let me, let me say that that's a very good question. And we, you know, the way to think about it is that one of the biggest challenges to industrialization is actually the whole issue of substandard goods, dumping, and all the other things that make it difficult, if not impossible, to produce competitive goods here. The second problem with substandard goods like tyres, like the, um, the person that asked the question rightly pointed out, is the risk to the consumer. That you're actually talking about a matter of life and death. If you use the wrong tyres, as you know, it can lead to road accidents and fatalities. So Standards Organization, as we say by way of manner of speech, has its work cut out for it. Meaning, it's a very important organization for the maintenance of standards. But we do tell the Standards Organization that maintaining standards, it must run, you know, in conformity or in consonance with this idea or this policy of the government of ease of doing business. What do I mean by that? The policies should be transparent, and people should understand what they are doing in a way that like, it doesn't just further corruption, which is the attitude many people have when they think about regulatory agencies. To answer the specific question that was raised, obviously, what we expect and what I'm sure will happen is that such substandard tyres will be destroyed, you know, and will be taken out of circulation. Which is why, you know, when we said you should stay in touch with us, if you find anything to the contrary, please let us know and please let the Standards Organisation of Nigeria know. Every nation has a responsibility to, you know, protect its borders, maintain its standards, and promote industrialization and job creation. Nigeria will not be an exception. Which is why this government is taking it very seriously. One last thing I would say is that in working according to the rules of the World Trade Organization, we are now drafting legislation which we did not have before, what they call safeguard mechanisms. Every country is allowed to have safeguard mechanisms and laws against dumping, against substandard goods, and against, you know, very hostile trade practices, which other nations can practice against each nation that is a subscriber or a member of WTO. So this is something we'll be taking to the legislation or the National Assembly, you know, for us to get, to pass it into our laws. So that was the first question. The second question was on production cost and particularly energy. And again, the person who has the question rightly pointed out that we know that energy is a problem. That is true. To bring it nearer home to Abia State, as the governor knows and we know, there is actually a power generation company, Geometric, that is based in Aba. And I know we have all made all kinds of interventions to make sure that our power comes on stream. Because one, it will reduce the cost of power and increase the availability of power. And that is something that I know we are very much, almost there now. I spoke to the promoter about a week or two ago and he told me that I just set out the remaining issues and I know that will reduce the cost of production significantly in Abia and environs once it comes on stream. Which leads to the larger point that the reason why we want to put in these special economic zones and industrial parks is to make sure they will have the infrastructure in place so that producers can go in there with lower cost of production while we try and sort out the general power problem over time. Clearly, power is a major, major priority of this government and of the country at this time. And when we talk about infrastructure, power is right up there. Thank you.
Honourable Minister of Labour.
Yeah, Chivanyanwu asked about the N-Power program. I'm not aware that there's any state that is not yet captured in the N-Power program. The N-Power Teach, N-Power Agriculture, N-Power Health, they have all taken off in all the states of the Federation. There are minor hitches in some states as payment. Because the payments are supposed to be made through the banks. In a place like Ido, there were some problems. In Enugu, there were hiccups initially. But all those have been sorted out. And the program has moved on very, very well. Same with the school funding program, which is going on in nine states now. They are part of the N-Power program. The 350 graduates, 1,000 graduates you're talking about, maybe from wherever you read it, it could be the deficit or the shortfall. If you remember, it's supposed to be a 500,000 scheme. But what we have taken in, in the first stanza, is 200,000 persons. So you still have a deficit of 300,000. And the N-Power bill is the one that has not actually taken off. Because we are still harmonizing our relationship with state governments and with our federal centers where these people will be taught the skill. So about 50,000 persons have not come on this particular program. We are doing that and we're also getting the consumables that will be used for their teaching. And because we cannot go to the market and buy, we have to do public procurement. The procurement process is being handled in the Ministry of National Learning and Budget and is ongoing. I think they are concluding the procurement process this week or so. This notwithstanding, there are some employment that have been advertised in FIRS, Federal Civil Service Commission, which is going to recruit for Ministries of Labour and Employment, Ministry of Transport, Ministry of Foreign Affairs, for foreign affairs officers. And we also have in DPR. DPR, they all advertised for those positions, for engineers, geologists, and the rest of them all. So these are aggregately ways government have been trying to cushion the effect of unemployment on the young people that are poured into the labour market annually. I don't want to mention, you also know that the 10,000 police officers and men have been recruited. In fact, their supplementary list came out last week for it to be complete 10,000 and are now undergoing training. Same goes for the other armed services, Navy, Air Force, Nigerian Army. They are also recruiting and they have been advertising. So we don't want to say because we are in recession that nobody should be recruited or even replacement done. Some agencies have been doing their replacement. But we want to see how we can synchronize everything so that nobody will be cheated or nobody left out because you don't have a godfather. We want to put everything onto the database. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's the issue of what are we doing with the money recovered? I want to assure every Nigerian that money recovered is being well-kept and is being used, one, to to fund the infrastructural deficit and, two, is being used also to complement the social investment programs. The important thing is that there's a committee, a presidential committee on recovery of, on asset recovery. And this committee, which is made up of the Attorney General, the Minister of Finance, the various anti-corruption agencies, they coordinate the activities and even though money is, you know, recovered by these various organizations individually and separately, they are pulled together and paid into the Ministry of Finance. One thing that we've witnessed in the last couple of months is that the whistle blow-up policy has been very successful. We received many tips and these tips have led to recovery of money. And the important thing also is that the government has also kept to its own promise that anybody that gives us information that leads to recovery of, you know, any money will be entitled to a certain percentage. And not that alone, we also protect the the identity of such a people. And in the last couple of weeks, witnesses search in the number of tips and information given to us. But let me assure the Nigerians that nobody can re-look any recovered, you know, money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The question from Mister Obi was on coal deposits in Enugu. Yes, the coal deposits in Enugu before now belonged to the Coal Corporation of Nigeria. But because of the privatization program, the BPE took over the coal deposits there. But because of the renewed attention in solid minerals, we are now discussing with the BPE because we have the Coal-to-Power Project. And the Coal-to-Power Project, we expect that this area, particularly Enugu, will be the hub of Coal-to-Power Project. And we are estimating 1,000 megawatts by the year 2020 from coal. Apart from the Coal-to-Power Project, we also have to the Coal-to-Fertilizer Project. You can extract urea from coal that we are doing. And the other thing is coal briquettes. To save off deforestation, we are encouraging factories or encouraging the setting of factories to produce coal briquettes. Already, Enugu State have indicated interest and we are working with them. On the limestone, limestone is one of the minerals that has been a success story for Nigeria. Because of the policy government adopted encouraging local manufacturers. Before now, we used to import cement. But because of the policy and attention given to limestone and using local materials in the course of import substitution, today Nigeria has about seven cement factories. We are self-sufficient in cement production. We are even exporting cement. So limestone is a very important mineral to us as a ministry and as a country. We are working on them. Thank you.
A question was asked on why we are not lending money to the rice millers. The ANCO borrowers' program was started off targeting the small-scale farmers who are the most numerous in the country. On rice alone, we have over 12 million of them growing rice across the country. And they need loans of 250,000 naira per annum. We don't give them cash, water pumps, improved seeds, fertilizer, and where they need it, chemicals. But now that rice millers are increasing in number and they need support to be able to buy of the paddy and mill and sell, a new phase of the ANCO borrowers' program is coming up and we shall include them. But the best news on that line is that we are now restructuring the Bank of Agriculture to make it stronger. And we are thinking of infusing very huge capital into that bank and making the interest rate as low as we can bargain with the market. One of the reasons why agriculture is so difficult here is that for a long time, people have insisted that even for agriculture, loans have to be the commercial rate between 18 and 25 percent. I always say that that may be very good for growing cocaine, but it's certainly not good for rice or yams or vegetables. So once the reform is completed in a few weeks from now and we restructure the Bank of Agriculture, rice millers, small, medium, or big, will be able to access credit. The second one is fertilizer. We have just concluded an arrangement with the government of Morocco for the sale of phosphate. Two ships have arrived and the blending is beginning. We are insisting that blenders must be allowed to blend in every state of the Federation where the facilities exist. That has created a bit of argument and petitions have been written. But wherever there is a blending plant, we shall ask the blenders to participate in the program so as to keep the price of fertilizer below 6,000 naira per bag. And that is coming on already. The blending has started. We shall launch that program this week or early next week and fertilizers will begin to move before the rains arrive. Thank you very much.
We thank the Honourable Ministers for their responses.
Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, the floor is now open. But with your permission, I would want to take on the His Excellency, the Governor of the State. You actually have some questions. So maybe while you make your comments, I would ask you this question. Don't be annoyed, don't be angry. Your Excellency, it was reported that you attended a South East Stand Governor's meeting some few days ago. You know the issue of security, particularly the issue of kidnapping has been a problem in the southeastern part of this country. Did you discuss that issue? And if you did, what are the majors have you taken? Then the second one, I don't want you to be angry. Christian Okorafo said you have refused to pay the allowances of your predecessors. Why? Your Excellency.
Thank you. I I would like to, I just have a few pieces of information to give then I'll take the questions. I want to go back to the issue of tyres, of standard tyres dumped by some Chinese. And I'm looking at it from the point of view of an environmentalist. Five billion naira worth of rubber cannot be destroyed by burning because if we do that, there are world treaties and conventions that will come hard against that. And as I speak today, I don't think Nigeria has the technology for the best way of disposing tyres, which is pulverization. But I know also that there's going to be some diplomatic issues around this matter. And my suggestion, I don't know how it will sit well with government, but my suggestion is that we seize this opportunity to look at those tyres as raw materials for a would-be pulverization industry. Because all over Nigeria, we have serious issues of handling used or disused tyres. But if we ask the Chinese, well, for to seize the tyres, yes, they'll become raw materials, but for a softer penalty for the corporates, let them come and set up a pulverization industry which will employ our youths and also serve using the the five billion naira dumped tyre as raw materials to produce belts, farm belts, and all kinds of conveyor belts because most industries rely on conveyor belts to drive them. The other information I want to give is that it's an update on what we are doing in terms of energy. Two weeks ago, led a delegation of Professor Batin Nadye and Pascal Buzier, the Chairman of MTN, to Cairo, where we met with the President of African Bank to see how they can inject money and then solve the problem between the distribution company and the generation company. Because all the effort that the federal government has made, especially through the Office of Mister Vice President, the active president, has yielded fruit to the point that the generation company is now supposed to pay some money to the distribution company for them to have the ring-fenced area of the Aba industrial zone. And the Geometric Factory is having problems raising the funds in foreign exchange. And that took us to African Bank. The good news is that African Bank has decided and agreed to inject 100 million US dollars to enable Geometric to pay off the Enugu distribution company so that they can begin to give power. The other good news from African Bank is that they are in full support of the Aba industrial city. Because as a matter of fact, the Aba area and Abia in Nigeria was recommended not only by some indigenous stakeholders like President Obasanjo, Chinese that invested 1 billion dollars in African Bank, asked the President of African Bank to look at Aba that it would justify their investment of 1 billion US dollars in African Bank. Having said that, I will return to the issue of limestone in Arochuku. With due respect to the Honourable Minister, the problem of making optimal use of the limestone deposits around the Hafia Ruchuku Belt is road. The Honourable Senator, the distinguished Senator, is, in fact, his other name is Senator for Arochuku Roads. If he achieves Arochuku Roads, I think he has done 50 percent of his man debt. And if we do that road, because as it is now, no investor can go to Arochuku because it will take you four hours to go to Arochuku from here. And that is ordinarily supposed to be less than an hour. And the track is treacherous. So you need And the track is treacherous, so you you need, we need to do that road. The federal government is doing something and the state is also doing a bypass to see if we can all can access Arochuku. What we can fix the road there, uh and alternatively, probably do a bridge connecting um Abia Knot and the Cross River. Would have opened up that deposit. I think that is the main issue about the rich limestone deposits around Arochuku. Um having said that, yes, the in the meeting of yesterday, the South East Governor discussed um the issue of kidnapping and violent crime. And we have agreed to collaborate and synergize. Abia is sitting at the center of Southeast and South South State. We have border with seven states around. So whatever happens in Potakot has a way of affecting us, whatever happens in Imo, um Anambra and all that. And it is crime being in a state of flux and dynamic in nature. You you can't do so much in Abia without uh being able to anticipate and anticipate what will be happening in Imo, Anambra, Ebony and so on. So uh we have come together to say, well, we will compare notes and our CPs and um other officers that are involved in uh securing our borders will collaborate and then compare notes and exchange notes. But most importantly, um crime has a way, you know, if you do social profiling of crime and criminals, they get bolder as they continue to practice their trade. So the best way to nip crime is to stop them on their tracks. And this new crime called kidnapping, incidentally, is a crime that relies on technology. I I am going to suggest also, pardon my negativity if that turns to be the case, that um e- even even at the federal level, we trackers are costly to procure. And we must deploy science and technology to, we must deploy science and technology to cop crime. We cannot pretend to be pursuing criminals with bare hands. Because the more we do that, they will get to the point where they will begin to use internet phones and will not be able to. And so the time to stop them is now. And um the states wouldn't mind a situation where, like what the Minister of, Honorable Minister of Agriculture just said, about procuring equipment that would have been difficult for states to procure, why won't we get thirty-seven trackers? And give it to all the states or do it on uh need-by-need, case-by-case basis? Because if all the states around the Southeast and South South, for instance, in fact, every part of Nigeria is vulnerable now. So thirty-seven trackers and then charges from our our allocation from source. Over so many years that we can pay, because no state can bring eight hundred million naira to buy tracker. But if we all have trackers and is domiciled in the CP's office, we will be looking at these criminals like fish in a pond. And that is the way to go and the time to do it is now. Because if we don't, they will continue to embodding themselves until they get a quite technology that is beyond what we can do easily. So that is my suggestion regarding that. Then um the other question is um about pension. You see, pensioners don't politicize their their wage. It's a very dangerous thing to do. If a pensioner politicizes his wage, he will be got to pay. So uh the state government received a letter just two weeks, a week last week from um some past governors. And they 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 appealed that their pension be paid. And it's not automatic, so the governor of Abia just transmitted it to relevant officers to look at uh the letter, see how much the person is entitled to, and begin the process of paying. There's no special pensioner. Pensioner is a pensioner. And I assure every pensioner that we are looking into their test. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much, His Excellency. Uh may I invite uh the distinguished senator? Who also wants to make one comment and thereafter ask whatever question?
Your Excellency, our great governor, this Deputy Governor, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, let me join you, sir. And also with my colleagues who on our board have sent here today. You are aware that the National Assembly is busy to catch up with time as regards the budget. So I think that has actually made it impossible for Senator Chudogji and Senator Abaribet to be here at present. But thank God that I'm here. So on behalf of the governor and this my uh colleagues, I want to join him to welcome all of you. Welcome, Senator, sorry, the Honorable Minister Ly Mohamed. Also, my brother Sam has asked me to say hello to you. I think you are all in Yife. I want to also join him to welcome Owa, Owa Ndebo, Ndebo Nekene. I want to also welcome the former national chairman of DDP, our father Mayoga, Chief Aldo Obi. And my great brother and colleague, we weathered it together as pioneer prince of the House of the National Assembly in the House of Representatives. Uh my brother, distinguished uh Babuare. Well, the governor has done well, but I think it's important that we should put certain things in the right perspective. It's very clear to me that I think we're about living rhetorics, we're about living blame games. We are really trying to face the real issue and at least arrive at the proper positive change we all are yearning for. There is no guessing the fact, we want things in the right direction. And with this kind of arrangement, both the town hall meeting and change begins with Chief Ly Mohamed. Uh I think we'll get there. But if you look at Abia, Abia really is well endowed. Abia is well endowed. The potentials in Abia are enormous. You can see, if you want to talk about the spirit, like he's talking about the indomitable spirit of an Igbo man. You could see the exhibition of that by the governor when he's talking about, instead of people are saying destroy those tires. But he says you don't need to destroy the tires, but you need to set up industry, uh for national industry that will help us and comfort. Conveyor belt and all that. It shows that it's made in Abba, true made in Abba, first governor. But all I want to say really, he said part of it. If you look at Abba, you are talking about clusters, which I know you have captured in this year's budget. But I think Abba already is 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 already a fertile ground as a cluster of industrial parks. All we need really here and more, two things. One is funding and the next one is infrastructure. We are, where our infrastructures are so dilapidated that we find it difficult to even move. I was telling them, if really, after the launching of MSME, you were here with the acting president. And in this year, Abey Kotebene Road, we just have a mega, less than one billion naira this year. We have, we have told you about limestone in Arochuku, Arochuku Road or Hafia Road, it's not even in the budget this year. I'm only struggling to put it back in the budget. We are talking about, look at the level, the deposit of limestone and gypsum in Arochuku or Hafia Bed. You also alluded, I think the Commissioner and Minister of Agriculture talked about Anese. If you go to there bend the area, you talk about rice, you talk about agriculture. But you can't come from Itumbuzo, no road. It can't come from Mbak, no road. And all the areas, you cannot, these um traditional rulers are all farmers, great farmers. So all I want to say is that we need your support in terms of infrastructure. If you help us to develop infrastructure, especially the road infrastructure, we know the power infrastructure is a global or national thing. But for us, at their state, um road infrastructure is key and we need that. Finally, I want to say, Owa, you see, you have said that no state that had not benefited from the empower. For me, it's a misnomer that with this present government, Christian, the Minister of Power, um Productivity, now to Minister of Labor Unemployment. And if you have a Ministry of Labor Unemployment, which means you have identified that unemployment is a is a challenge. So why do we have to duplicate? Why can't you move that to Minister of Labor Unemployment? It's about employment. Why do we need to duplicate? Where you have the potential, the people who can handle it. So for me, I think it's a mis, and that's why we are failing. I want to tell you the truth. Few days ago, the woman was chased out of the senate when she came to defend the budget, because they told her they don't understand. You can't stay in Abuja unemployed. You say you're employed when you are talking about the people. You are talking about the people and you know how to read the people. So please, I want you to to look at uh at that. Then finally, sir, finally, that is to the Minister of Information. You talked about looted funds. We have seen so much, but I don't think you begin to deploy looted funds without records. You need to send it back to the National Assembly, let them appropriate it to a line ministry. Because when you appropriate them, then there will be a check. But if we begin to spend without record, then we are looting the looted funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I think the senator has spoken on behalf of everybody. Should we close? Should we close? Okay, I open the floor now and I will start from my from my right-hand side. Please, just one question so that people would, you know, have opportunity to ask questions.
Every protocol is observed. Honorable Minister for Information, I would very humbly direct my question to you. Uh my name is Sardon Obane Okubunko Fasa. I'm the Executive Director of Center for Equity and the Eradication of RuPaul at a civil society organization. Mister Minister, sir. Um for us to get at the benefits of SMS, agriculture, and solid minerals, everything that has been stated here, one has to be alive first and foremost. Honorable Minister, sir. In the recent past and even currently, a lot of mayhem has been taking place in this country. No matter what, wherever it is, whatever happens in Zone A of Nigeria is applicable to what could happen in Zone B or Z and so on of Nigeria. The Fulani herdsmen have been on the rampage. They've been killing with impunity. And each time they kill, it takes a lot of public pressure before the presidency or the federal government does anything. And some of us are beginning to wonder what the problem is. Even now that we are told that more than fifty-five thousand policemen are in Saturn Kaduna. Last week, more than twenty-seven we also killed. And we are asking, why has life lost its sanctity? And finally, Mister Honorable Minister, when you were the National Public Security Secretary of the Defunct ACN and the late President Yaradua was very sick, you vehemently insisted that the state of health of our president was the business of Nigerians and that Nigeria should be fair on daily basis. What has happened to him? We are asking you, what is the state of health of our president? Thank you, sir.
Please, give the next person the honourable. Hello? Thank you. Where is he? Please, I need order. Unless I recognize you, you will not speak. And when you are speaking, please go straight so that we give other opportunities. Thank you. Go ahead.
Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Abia. Let me stand on the existing protocol. Our honorable minister is here. Please, uh what I want to know? Sorry, what you want to know, we Nigerians? Oh, sorry.
Your name, organization?
Okay, my name is Honorable Emekokavu, the Chairman of IPAC, Southeast Cacus. What we needed to know is that why is the federal government destroying some of these uh so-called illegal refineries? Instead of using those boys, doing those things to better our situations in the fuel supplies? Since our refineries cannot give us well. That's my question.
Thank you. Can I have the person behind there? Yes. Stand up, please. Go ahead.
Excellency, all protocols duly observed. In these remains, Chukwu, the General Gela, represent the good people of Issiquaton. And my questions are brief. That goes to the Minister for Industries and Trade and Investment. Yeah, we're talking about industrialization and having to encourage making Nigerian goods. We know Abba is a fertile ground like our governor has stood on. I want to ask a question on the issue of making Abba a free trade zone. I don't know the possibility, how this government can create a free trade zone in Abba wherein we can allow um goods like leather and clothes, fabric to be brought into Abba without paying excessive duties to encourage the producers and the shoemakers when we can make quality shoes that are made from this our country and in turn export them. Um the other issue is the issue of making, we have um the dry sea port. Making Abba or any of these environs, putting a dry sea port there or as well choosing Azumbe where we have access to the Atlantic Ocean. To have the government dredge it and see if we can establish a port wherein some of these are goods and be exported. So that we can not only belabor the activities in the um Apapaport and the Tinkan Port. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um may I quickly get to our royal fathers this way? Any question from our, any of our royal fathers? Please direct to the point.
My own governor, let me stand on the existing protocol. My question is very simple. My name is Islera Maniesti, is engineer, Patrick Gudey, it's one of the chairman, chancellor, traditional rulers, Ben the local government. Is the issue of these hensmen our friends and our brothers? We have been accommodating them, but now is trying to run out of hand, especially in Bend. Do you know that our women cannot go to farm without a man because of fear in Abuj? The governor applies us to embark on agriculture. And when we took loan and invest on agriculture, they can now come now and eat it off. Where do we get money and pay for the loan? Especially the afraid, our people are afraid going inside the bush without a man because of the hensmen. As I approach, as I'm talking now, they are inside our farm. I purported to the the executive governor, uh executive chairman of Ben the local government. On the last security meeting, I advised him to call the state to come and see them inside our bush. Before the war and after the war, the hensmen, they came into the our various villages, not inside bush. They retire on the primary schools. After that, they go away. I humble suggest that the state government should do something about these hensmen by giving them a place. Let them look for labor to go and get grass for them inside the bush and give to the enama so that they will not finish us. The federal government, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, with your permission. Please, with your permission, may I request if there is any question from any of the youth corpus? The youth corpus? No question? Okay, your royal highness.
Our beloved Governor, Honorable Governor, Divine Governor, Governor Kezikba Zou, PhD, and the executives, the Minister of Information and the team. We commend you people for this change begins with me and more especially our dear president. My name is His Royal Majesty, Eze Pastor Ambassador Philip Ajomiwe. Number one of four hundred. Chairman, no, I am not Council of Traditional Rulers. Number one cassava farmer processor in Abia State. Monsieur, Monsieur, le chef, I will, the Minister, the right, because, so you are the Bienvenu Abia State. On parlera tout à l'heure. My question is this. It's for the minister. Minister, please, you are aware that the Ministry of Agriculture invested heavily on the processors in Abia, in Nigeria, the nation Nigeria, which our companies, one of them. You spoke about rice, other value chains. The former agricultural transformation agenda deals with rice, palm, cocoa, cassava. But your message to us today is blended cassava. And it is believed that Nigeria is number one cassava processor, producer in the nation, number one. But in value chain and you are supported, we don't do much. Thailand is doing better than us. Why? Minister, I want to ask you this question. Do you want all the processors in Nigeria to abandon possessing cassava flour, odorous tofu, starch, gharri, chips, and wheat and come to rice? Minister, you are aware, maybe because Indians and some investors capitalize, maybe the ministry or the nation is not talking any about cassava. Gharri is imported in Nigeria today. Say, I'm quiet, I'm afraid. So, please, others touched the cattle destruction in our farmland and involved. They pistol modern theaters of cassava, o, 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 steps. The government of police is aware. How do we change this, this house, of this, oh, heathmen? These, o, o, men that are destroying our farms? How do you, we are talking about? Please include in your movement, change these heathmen from destroying our farmland. About plant this, plant that. Thank you very much. It's a bit we can't go further.
Thank you. Label. 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 Please, straight to the point. No lectures.
I am comrade Uchenna Obigwe, your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Abia State. Let me write on the existing protocol. Yes, change begins with me and begins with all of us. We have accepted that. We, the working class, are letting federal government know, because federal government is here, that the prices of commodities has astronomically gone high. Services have gone high. Cost of PMS has gone high. Electricity tariff have gone high. And we say that we are fighting corruption. If workers' salaries are not increased, which is static, can we actually make bold and say that we are fighting corruption in this country? I want the Minister for Information and the Minister of Labor and Productivity to answer all these questions with the working class demanding for that.
Thank you. I will now just take one and then we will close. Member of the House of Rep? The member of House of Rep? Where is he? Where is the member? Please, come forward.
Thank you.
Oh, you are two, sorry.
Thank you, Governor and dear guest. I want to to Minister for Labor. My name is Honorable Talentin Wokocha. I'm a member of the Green Chamber. I'm aware that the rule of law is a major ingredient. That is supremacy of the constitution. Now, I overheard when you were addressing us initially that the Nigerian police, they recruited like ten veterans. Please, I want to know, in section fourteen-three of the Constitution, which clearly stated the ingredients for peace, loyalty, and all the things that can make a country to work perfectly well. Where, where employment or in all agencies should be spread according to zones, states, and local governments. Could you please tell us to what extent and promise Abians, in particular Nigerians in general, that in the next one or two weeks, that you can make public the list of the entire people that were employed and the states and local governments, where they come from? Because as the Deputy Chairman of Federal Character, I'm aware that there are certain inconsistencies that need to be made public for Nigerians to understand what is happening. Thank you, Mister Minister.
So, I want to thank every one of you. Unfortunately, time is against us. Time is our enemy. But then I would request the honorable ministers, through the Minister of Information, to request his colleagues to respond to the issues raised. Honorable Ministers, sir.
Thank you very much. I think the Honorable Minister of Labor and Employment in addition to the questions that pertain to labor, who also take on some issues that pertain to infrastructures, fairly roads. I think on my own, I will just kick off. Three questions were asked. Two of them dwell on the issue of the heathmen and the farmers and the frequent clashes. And then the second one is about the president's health. And the last one is about how we can justify the fight against corruption, why the price of commodities are still going up. Now, I will start with the last one. I think it's precisely because of corruption that the price of commodities have gone up. It's very simple. If one person was found with almost ten million dollars in an uncompleted house, another one was found with one thirty-six million dollars in a fake account, another one was found with seven billion naira, all this through, no, no, with super policy. Now, there's no way, there's no economy that can survive this kind of looting and the price of commodities or services will not go up. It's very simple. Because these are funds which were meant either for infrastructure or they were meant for, you know, for services. So that is why we cannot revamp the economy. You cannot actually do anything about the economy unless you actually face corruption squarely. But when we are doing both together, at the same time as we are fighting corruption, we are ensuring that we are also spending out of recession by investing heavily in infrastructure. Thank you very much. Now, there's the issue of the heathmen. I, I want to, I, I want to make this appeal. The strength of Nigeria is its diversity and its unity. We've been living together peacefully before and we shall continue to live together peacefully. Now, it is not correct that this, that the government is sponsoring or supporting any section of the country against the other. No. The issue is a security issue and I'm happy the governor of Abia City is here. I know that the holding meeting with these various security chiefs and they are doing everything possible to ensure that normalcy returns. But please, do not even imagine that this is state-sponsored or state-sanctioned. Then on the issue of the health of Mister President, I, I, I can say here very boldly and confidently that there is absolutely no cause for alarm. Mister President called me at two forty-three PM on Saturday and we spoke. It is true that I'm often asked, oh, when you were the spokesperson for APC or spokesperson for ACN, you said this and that. That is correct. I did say that if Mister President was in hospital or was critically ill, I, as Minister of Information, would give a daily bulletin. For Mister President is neither critically ill, nor neither is in the hospital and there's nothing life-threatening about the checks that Mister President is going through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the golden voice of the administration. Can we put our hands once more for Mister President? Thank you.
Now, please, now call on the Honorable Minister for Agriculture to please address the issues.
Now, let me, let me quickly react to the question, the problem between heathmen and farmers. We in the Ministry of Agriculture are very much at the center of this crisis. And frankly, we feel deeply disturbed by it because like the two traditional rulers said, we ask people to go and farm and then there is this problem of heathmen and cattle eating up their crops. It's affecting not only the farmers but the food the farmers are supposed to produce and sell to society. We started working on this matter as soon as we came in. It's not easy to resolve in one day. But I assure you, it won't be long before we solve it for two actions we are putting in place. India had this same problem many years ago. They solved it. What they do in those places is to harvest all the waste material from agriculture like rice straw, even cassava leaves, corn straw, maize, soybean straw, and so on, process them and package them for sale to heathmen. We've just bought a hundred hammer mills for this purpose. So a time is coming, maybe in another few months, when we can begin to regulate this. And for this reason, the president set up a committee headed by General Nze from Igbo State, who is working on the machinery for controlling the movement and sometimes the irresponsibility of the heathmen. Because as a farmer myself, nothing can be more upsetting than to arrive and find that my crops have been destroyed. So in the interim, I must, on behalf of government, apologize to all those who are suffering this thing, but we have to bring it to a halt. The problem is, it's difficult for the police or the army to follow the heathmen all over the place. It's also difficult to control their behavior because the heathmen unfortunately are not even the owners of a cattle. Very few of them can afford five cows. As you see them moving along, those cows belong to some big men in society. So like the Minister of Information said, it's not that somebody is sending them out to go and provoke others. It is that over the years, we as a people did not take enough steps to make sure that cattle rearing in Nigeria follows the pattern of other countries. I know there are heathmen in different parts of the world. They don't behave the way our own are doing. And they don't carry AK-47s, which nobody has a right to carry. So I sincerely apologize to all of you. They've done it to me. They've done it to me. And I know how badly I felt about it. We will bring this matter to a close sooner than later. We are working on the, on the mechanism. We are even now training three thousand agro-rangers who will protect farms in different places. Especially where you have a rice field. We want the rice to feed ourselves, not cattle. But when we've harvested the rice, the straw, we can sell to heathmen. And the agro-rangers are being trained by the Civil Defense and the Ministry of Agri to begin to protect farms so that farmers can go freely and come back. Number two, cassava. My apologies for not mentioning cassava. We value cassava. The Chinese are here looking for cassava starch, ethanol, even syrup for the beer industry. So we haven't forgotten you. We have a fund which has just been approved for us to deepen the cassava industry, especially for use in bread production. Fifteen percent cassava inclusion in bread. And Nigerians don't like that, but Brazil, which is the biggest producer of wheat in the world, still includes fifteen percent cassava in their bread and they eat it. So once we sort out the problem of bake shore, believe me, our attention will now come back fully to those of you who have invested heavily in cassava production. Excellence, le chef, je vous salue. On se parlera plus tard. Merci beaucoup, mon chef. I hear my friend, he, he speaks French and we shall talk about that. The rest of you must not listen to what we're saying. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much. I think the Honorable Minister for Industry.
Thank you. There were two questions I was asked that relate to my area. One is again on the Aba Free Trade Zone and how to make sure it benefits from some of the incentives in a way that will lower the cost of duties and make it competitive, especially for export. And I would say the person who has the question hit the nail on the head. One of the things we found when we came into government is, you know, people talk about industrial parks, free trade zones, industrial clusters. It was almost becoming a badge of honor without dealing with why. And in my experience and view, there are three things you have to get to get the success out of it. One is like our distinguished senator pointed out, the importance of infrastructure. To make sure that they have the infrastructure there that will lower the cost of doing business. The second one, which the gentleman that asked the question raised, is to give the appropriate incentives, especially like he said, if it's meant for export, so that thing is competitive. You know, to lower the, you know, all those sort of excessive charges, both visible and invisible, both formal and informal. Because there are all kinds of charges that people pay, that at times are not even documented. And then the third one is to provide access to markets and maybe some of the other logistics, like suppliers and the, and the, and the people around them that will make, make it easier for the trade to happen. And all these things have to go into a feasibility study, into a plan. So what we are doing in the case of our Aba Free Trade Zone and all the others for that matter is that we are working with experts, some of whom have been to Aba already. You know, basically to come up with a plan that will be followed within a reasonable time, so that when we do it, we'll come up with the, with the results we want, including the free trade zone being competitive. And one way of measuring competitiveness is the ability to export, because then you're dealing with the world market. So hopefully, that's the exact result we're going to get. I think work is going to commence in a very serious way. I know the governor has lent us one of his key people, who is already working with my team, working on this, one of the people, the governor knows the gentleman that he asked to join us and I know that meeting even today. So I think you'll be seeing results very soon. The second question was on the issue of sea ports and dry sea ports and Azumbele and dredging and so on. Let me just say that these same principles apply. We need to look at all the options. As you know, there is also a sea port that we're looking at in Akwa Ibom. We've heard about the opportunity in Azumbele as well. What we want to do is to do a feasibility study that will gauge, one, the attractiveness of this from a private sector perspective. Because what you want are things that are sustainable. So if government were to put in some infrastructure or some investment, can we do it in partnership with the private sector? Such that those ports can become viable and run from there. One of the benefits of that is that you can actually do more than one. Because one of the things that we want to do is to support a number of these projects. But the key is to bring private sector investment, private sector participation. And I'm sure that being the kind of people we are in Abia State and in the southeast for that matter, I think I expect that like this policy and approach will favor us as well. The final point I want to make is that as a general approach, we want to do this as private, as public-private partnerships. So I think it's on that same basis that we'll look at the Azumbele sea ports to see if it would be viable. Thank you.
Honorable Minister.
Comrade Ezekwe, fellow comrade. You know I'm Comrade Minister. Worker salaries, increasing cost of living. We have not had an increase in the worker salary that is commensurate to the inflationary tendencies in the country. You know, as a level leader, that after the fuel price increase, we put up a committee between government and labor. And the major task of that committee is to do an appraisal. It's a technical committee that will work out val值tives and the criteria for a minimum wage committee to start their work. We had a minimum wage in the country, and the issue of minimum wage is something of universal application. It's not for federal government only. It applies to federal government, state government, local government, and even people in the private sector. The minimum wage comes as an act of federal government. It's one of the things in the federal government legislative list that is exclusive to the National Assembly, Section 34 of the Exclusive Federal List. So that committee, the technical committee, I'm the chairman. We finished our work. We are now to handover. Last week, we were to do the handover. The labor unions appealed to me and said they have a triennial conference in Asaba for the Construction Workers Union. So we couldn't do that. We are hoping to do that maybe next week. So when that committee comes on, the minimum wage committee, which will encompass government on one side, private people from Man, Manufacturing Association of Nigeria, NASIMA, NECA, Nigerian Employers Constitutive Assembly, who are the body of employers, and then the union on one side, the three sides will meet. Even on the government side, it won't be federal government only. The architecture we've done to submit is that the governors should be involved in the government side. People from Algon will come on that the government side. Then, side of the federal government will bring their own representatives too. Because the issue of minimum wage is not for only the federal government. Some state governments are not able to pay the present minimum wage that is in situ. So they must be carried along with us. Some private employers are not able to pay the minimum wage that is currently in situ. So it's a holistic thing. That is what is involved there. Honorable Dantin Mokocha, the concession, you are very correct, in Section 14.3, talks about federal character representation in anything, employment, appointments in Nigeria. I will, lies with you, so I know where the assembly you are serving, whether it's status of assembly or if it is the National Assembly, state. Or national... If it's a National Assembly, I mean, you have your federal character committee in the National Assembly. It's there. And they oversee the Federal Character Commission, which is the executive side of it. So you can get this information. It's easy. It's not, it won't be my own anymore to do. But we can sit, lies, and talk and provide you with the information you want as the concession and application of Section 14.3. Infrastructure. Minister of Works, Power and Housing, Babatunde Fashallah is not here, but I have been in touch with him using the mobile phone and with the information also available to me even before I came here, based on the fact that I am in charge of all the unions, including the construction workers. Whenever road construction or building construction ceases to be done, some workers are laid off. So I will know. They will inform me. If, whether it is stood off, whether it is complete redundancy, I will know. So I do know for sure today, as we speak, that the federal government of Muhammadu Buhari is interested in bringing back workers to site. And in many of the federal road constructions that were abandoned and workers put on stood off in the last three years, we've been able to get a lot of them back to work this season. And while saying that, it becomes, distinguished man, Obama is not here, it becomes imperative that legislators representing their people, because I'm a legislator, I've been a legislator too, you have to follow this trend and know who is working on the road that passes through your constituency. You would then allow the locals, the people, because the people own the road. They own it, and they own the money. They own the contractor. You can't just go home. No, 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 no. Contractor collects, eh, go, eh, gejiru zogi, and is resting. The Enugu Potakot Road that traverses through here is divided into three sections. Section one, Enugu to Okigwe. A lot of work is going on. Section two, Setra Co. has done section two. I wrote on both of them yesterday as I was coming here. Section three, from Okigwe to Aba, is not being done. CGC is the contractor. CGC have collected their money since last year. The work they are doing there is favorable. The governor, the legislators, have a role to do, play in such a situation. And let me also remind you people. And that is what I'm saying. No. I was governor in Anambra State. I did three-quarters of all the federal roads in Anambra State, and asked for compensation. So... At least, if I had this rum manam, but when we were governors and thereafter, along federal roads, some of them are still there, fifteen years after I left office. They're there. So... Again, we have also to say that... Governor Fashallah text me here. He said it must be procured in 2017. Yeah, when I get award only the contract. I'm aware that that contract has some problem because... So Governor Fashallah is saying, "Nagame, eh, award in 2017 for execution." Finally, before I round up, railways, then we have a coastal railways running from Lagos, Ijebo de Benin, Asaba, Wari to Bayasa in Eguan. That was how it was because it was supposed to be for Niger Delta areas. When Governor Amechi came on board, we looked at it, and a special application, special plea was met to the President, Commander-in-Chief of Federal Republic of Nigeria. And they granted approval that that railway, one leg of it should go into Onisha, across the Niger Bridge, with another railway bridge. Another will go to Aba, through Ikote Beni, and do export into Omaia to meet the old narrow gauge rail. These were not done and were not in the list of approvals done in the past regime. But this is a man, and he could not like rain, or like rain. But he had been giving us things quietly and silently. Enugu Onisha Road, construction is heavy there. I go there every time. I prejudicate the contractors, and they're working. And that one would terminate at Amansi, because that's the first one of that job. So my point here is that... Anybody can build federal road. Local government, if you have money. State government, if you have money. Ask for a fund. If the road is well-built, you'll get your refund. The one I did in Anambra, Governor Pito, we collected 12 billion naira as refund. So...
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. There was this disabled gentleman who was here and wanted to make a contribution. Where is he? Is he still around? Please hurry up and straight to the point. Please, can somebody give him the microphone right there? Have you gotten the mic? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Stanley Onyebuchi. I'm the State Chairman, Joint National Association of Persons with Disability. The Honorable Minister of Labor, I want to bring to your notice that the percentage given to persons with disability at the Federal Civil Service Commission is not enough. Many persons that are graduates roaming the streets, the government cannot do it alone. So please, feel to you that the percentage given to persons with disability at the Federal Civil Service Commission should be increased. Because with the nature of our disability, some of us cannot engage in carpentry or auto mechanic. So please, after passing through the stress of social institution in Nigeria, I think persons with disability should be given a job. Some of us have been on the street for five years, six years, seven years without job. And also, I also want the Minister of Information, please, during the campaign, our president promised persons with disability at an interactive section in Lafayette, National State, that as soon as he gets into the office, that he will actualize the disability bill. That bill, disability bill, a bill that will take care of rights of persons with disability. We want it. I think that would be the greatest gift the federal government will give to us. Because had even, there is a bill that takes care of our disability, that people with disability. What's happened here today? Many persons with disability raising our crutches and hands and our walking sticks, and we are not recognized. I think, have even there is a bill in place that would have been taking care of our rights. So we want that bill. Get back to the president or the acting president. Please, they should help to facilitate the passage of that bill. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, time is not our friend, but we are almost getting there. May I, at this stage, invite His Excellency, who is making some presentations to the honorable ministers before we finalize. Your Excellency, sir.
On behalf of the artisans and manufacturers and indeed the entire people of Abia State, it is with pride that I made this presentation of all-round made in Abia product, including a drum box and its contents. Some shoes, leather bag, duvet, all made in Abia. As we give you this, we give you a piece of our heart, and we look up to you with optimism that indeed, the kindness and benevolence of our leader at the national level, Mr. President himself, we thought the lives of Abia, especially this people that toil night and day to make our country proud despite all odds. Finally, I want to put it on record that over 1 million pairs of shoes leave Abia for the West Coast every week, and we pray that you come to our help. It is well with Abia State. Honorable Minister. Thank you, sir.
Your Excellencies, the governor of Abia State. Yes, thank you. I'm told that we all have one, so, Owah, this is not your own. Please bring it back. Thank you. Your Excellency, the governor of Abia State, on behalf of the president and the government and people of Nigeria, permit me to thank you immensely and also appreciate the industry of the people of Abia State. These are products that anybody, anywhere in the world would be proud of. And I think, if you remember in my opening address, I said that about four federal executive council meetings before now, myself and the honorable minister of Trinidad Industry actually co-sponsored a note in council, which was approved. And part of that note was that the Federal Executive Council approved that the Bureau of Public Procurement will amend its act in a manner that it will give priority to made in Nigeria products. And I'm sure that the biggest beneficiary of this will be the people of Abia State. These are first-class products. As a matter of fact, we went further in that note that things like school bags, school shoes must be made in Nigeria if they are to be used in our schools. And therefore, the labor of the people of Abia State will start yielding fruits very soon. Once again, we thank you for your hospitality. Thank you very much. I think on this note, I will just take my vote of thanks. It's been a very pleasant, you know, meeting, very robust, you know, exchange. We do not, you know, censor what questions are asked. Nigeria is one big family, and it does not matter where you come from, please see yourself as a member of that family. That's where this team is not afraid to go to anywhere in Nigeria. We know that we have, you know, all of us, we have views, we have passions, but please break it in the open, we'll explain. And we are also going to take it back to government. Some of the things we told us today, we'll take back to government, and by the time we come back again to Abia for whatever, we'll see that it will be a much better, you know, quality. Once again, on behalf of my colleagues, I thank you very much for making this town hall meeting and the campaign a success. I thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable ministers. Thank you, His Excellency. We will now have a group photograph.